Yes. Sir? Can you sign it? Mike? Can you sign it? Sign it? Can't read my letter, can't read my friend's. He says it's just the one. Put it back on later. Barbara did it before, but she only had the ones that were highlighted.
My scientific might be overstepped. We've got some...
Most recent one.
We got, yeah. Baseball numbers.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Things move. Like stuff. Thirty seconds. Well, all these things are all right. All tied into the same thing. Straight up.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Sit down.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Champion?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Powers?
Here.
We're going to have a minute of silent prayer and then we're going to have the flag salute by PAC eighty-four Cub Scouts, Bears, and Seven.
Thank you. Hmm. Attention. Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Color guard place colors. Salute. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do. Color guard dismissed. Thank you, you... Thank you, please be seated.
Thanks, guys, that was a great job. Liz, would you please read the video statements? This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Sherwood Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and or deletions? Counsel?
Madam Mayor, can I ask that item E six be pulled for discussion, please?
Okay.
As well as E four.
E four. Okay, then I guess we're on to the presentations by the Police Department, the Police Property Section.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight we have with us Lynn Hutchinson, who's the Property and Evidence Officer, and she'll be doing a presentation on the Evidence Section as far as within the Police Department.
Hi, nice to see everyone. I've been an employee of the City of Galt for twenty-four years and it's been a great twenty-four years and very grateful to the city for having me so long. As far as I'm concerned, property and evidence is the most important part of police work. Of course, you know, it's the crucial part, it can make or break a case. Oh, I was going to say, do I need to push something to get it going?
No, it's just the usual delay, that's all.
Today I'm hoping that you're going to walk away with a better understanding of exactly what property and evidence is and how it's handled and what happens to property when it's no longer needed. Some property, of course, is needed forever. Just January fourth, Mountain View Police Department made an arrest from a twenty-eight year old homicide with a cold case through DNA evidence. If the property had been destroyed or wasn't stored correctly, the murder of an eighteen year old girl may have gone unsolved. It's hard to come back from vacation and greeted with this, which sometimes happens. However, this case worked out perfect. The owner was located and the property has since been returned to its owner and it was a success. As you can see from the flow chart, different... There are different categories of property. There's evidence, safekeeping, and found. The property is located by the officer and it's determined either that it will be its evidence in a case, which would mean that it's going to solve or, you know, prove someone has done something wrong. To be safekeeping, we get a lot of safekeeping guns particularly on restraining orders or it could be found. And so it's determined what it is and it's brought in by the officer. Evidence could be a tool used to get into a house, could be, you know, a screwdriver, hammer. A piece of property stolen from a house may even be with fingerprints or blood left at a scene. Evidence items might be related to a crime, properly handled and maintained. Every piece of evidence has a statute of limitations. This could be a year for misdemeanors or three years for a felony. And we do hold all of our homicide evidence forever. As you probably know, homicide evidence is typically held just until the suspect has served his time or passed away while incarcerated. So as I said, it is held forever. Safekeeping could be personal property that someone had when they were booked at the jail. The jail only allows a small bag for each person booked. The officer would book any remaining property for safekeeping, so I would keep it until they were out of jail. Temporary protection comes into play when someone has a restraining order placed on them. By law, they're not permitted to have firearms in their possession. They're told to turn them over to law enforcement. We receive firearms periodically for safekeeping. Often citizens will drop off ammunition, sometimes old and rusted that they would like destroyed. Sometimes we get prescription and non-prescription pills for destruction. Safekeeping items are held for sixty days, except firearms that we are required by law to retain for a hundred and eighty days. Then there's found property. In two thousand and twelve, we booked just over seventy-five pieces of found property. That's not really too bad for our town. Many owners are not located due to not reporting lost or stolen items, not having serial numbers on larger items. We... There's a system in California called CLETS. It's California Law Enforcement Telecommunications System. And if you have the information, let's say on your Sony TV and you have a serial number, the make and the model, we are able to put that information out throughout the state. So if your property is located, let's say in Los Angeles, they can run the serial number and find you here in Galt. But most people don't have that information, so their property goes uncollected and then it comes to me. Found property is kept for ninety days and may be claimed by the finder after certain steps are taken. We had recently, it was an incredible story, they... I came in, there was a baby stroller that someone had booked as found property. Well, the owner, he... They had just moved here and they took... And they made flyers and put them throughout Galt for their lost baby stroller. Well, this baby stroller was, I believe, I forget the man, the makeup of it, I think it was a Gucci maybe, but it was a four hundred and fifty dollar stroller. And the officers were out on patrol and the gentleman waved him down and said, "I lost my stroller and here's a flyer." And they said, "Yes, we've already seen the flyers and we know and we're looking for the stroller." Well, I went into dispatch and I saw the flyer up on the wall and I went, "I have that stroller." So I called the man and he was so excited. They had just moved to Galt two months prior and he said, "I am so glad I live in this town, everybody's awesome, the Police Department did this great job, everybody knew about my stroller being, you know, stolen and I was able to get it back." And he was really delighted. Gives you a good feeling when people, you know, think that we're... Or notice that we're very good at this and nice. There's chain of custody and chain of custody is just a story per se of what every... What happens to a piece of property. It tells you every place that property has been, who's touched it, where it's, you know, if it's gone to the DA's office, if it's gone to the lab for testing, you know, exactly where that piece of property has gone. We, um... We send items to various locations such as the lab, to the Sheriff's Department, we might send something for DNA. So property can go a lot of different places. We have a processing and evidence collection area in our back room and that's where our guys weigh their drugs. They... The little table off to the right with the lamp that is, I guess I can use my laser and show you, right there. This is where they use latent powder to process stuff, looking for prints. They might bring a tool in that is found at a burglary scene and dust it with the dusting powder, looking for the latent. And we do this all by ourselves. In our evidence room, we have just a huge evidence room, I call it huge, it's probably not that big, when it fills up and I need more room, I better not say it's too big. We have a room at the Police Department and we have outside storage. We have one garage that will hold three cars, they pull right in and that'll hold three cars, and then we have another area where we keep bikes. Different types of property require different handling. Some need to be stored at room temperatures, others need to be stored in the refrigerator or even frozen. Media needs to be stored on a shelf all by itself to keep it from any magnetic devices that could distort or erase the disc. So we have the two outdoor storages and then we have lots of items in our back room. We have... One of the particularly large items that we've had in the past is we had a couch from a homicide in the early two thousands and then we have grow lights and abundance of bulky items such as that. There are some expectations, but most evidence is stored chronologically. I'm sorry, there's some exceptions. I try to keep everything in chronological order except for, like I say, the media that I pull away from the magnets and such or found in safekeeping. We do have audits, we have external audits and internal audits. External audits are done about every five years or when there's a change in the command. When Chief Bowen joined us, he required an audit from a firm and that was done in August of two thousand and eleven. Internal audits are done... Internal audits are done periodically by the lieutenant or the chief. They'll come in and just pull some property sheets and have me show them where it is and make... Check in the computer and it tells where it should be and they're checking that. There have been no discrepancies in any of the audits that I've been involved in. So now the case has been adjudicated and where does all this stuff go? Because I really don't want to keep it all. We do option some property and we get fifty percent of the sale price. We use propertyroom.com in Southern California. One thing I really like about propertyroom.com is if someone goes online and they see a piece of their property that they have reported stolen and, you know, perhaps they didn't have the serial number, Property Room will return it to them. They'll take it offline and return the property, which is a huge plus. We physically destroy property that is deemed unusable. You know, we all cut clothing, the purses that we've taken from the market, if it's not over... It's not a lot, we take a razor blade and cut them to deem them unusable and burn them. We burned drugs and guns at Covanta in Crowe Landing periodically. And we have also, like, the larger things that we've gotten from the market, we have taken down there and burned. Any questions? Good job.
Yes, we do have a question. I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, you stated that we store evidence.
Yes.
Do we have an off-site facility where we do that? Because, I mean, do we keep all cases here on our facility?
We do.
Well, where do we have that room? That's the secret. Yeah. I didn't know we had that much room over there.
My evidence room is quite large. The next time you're over there, stop by and I'll show you.
Well, I've asked, but it's easy to take me to the jail area. Um, and, uh... And you said it was propertyroom.com if people want to...
Yes.
Like, that... I was unaware of that and that's something that needs to be advertised more often or something, because I was unaware that that was on there.
And a lot of agencies throughout California use them, there's... It's a huge website.
Well, I'll have to try to pass the word myself for folks that are not sure. Thank you so much, Lynn, it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have public comment, is there any public comment that's not related to one of the issues that's on the, um... There is, let me try to read that, please. Yes. Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. First, Rick Keizer.
Mayor, councilmembers and staff, thank you so much for letting me be here, certainly appreciate it. I am, uh... My name is Rick Keizer and the timer freaks me out. My church would absolutely love a timer.
Yes, it would.
Hey. I am, uh... I'm a pastor in town and also the founder of a new organization that just started here called Tiny Smiles. We're an organization that's helping transition families between hospital and home. And recently we held our inaugural Tiny Smiles Half Marathon, five K and Children's Fun Run, and I'm just here to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Armando Solis and his staff over at Park and Recs, Lieutenant Aftergrove, certainly his staff, Chief Bowman was an amazing help, the cats, officers, cadets, we're all out there. And then if you don't mind, I'm just going to rattle off some of the local sponsors. The Galt Market, Delta Physical Therapy sponsored, River Rat Porta Potties, Galt Business Builders, BMD, Anytime Fitness, Save Mark, It's a Grand, Family Life Christian Church, and then there were some other smaller donors as well, and those are just our local folks that gave to us. Over the last week since the race, I've had probably ten to fifteen conversations and gotten about the same number of emails from different people and they all said the same thing. It was the safest race course that they've ever been on, they'd never seen Galt before, they loved it, the volunteers were all friendly, it was the best inaugural race that they had and they absolutely loved Galt. At the time, Mayor Payne, Councilmember Payne was with us at our very first planning meeting and they had told us to plan on about a hundred to a hundred and fifty participants. And really it was kind of a negative meeting, I thought. The essential comment I think I left with was nobody knew where Galt was, the run can't be successful here. And we ended up with roughly four hundred participants, a hundred and twenty-eight volunteers, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts were there, Galt High School provided probably thirty volunteers in the last twenty-four hours, which was needed. The Galt Herald did an amazing job and by the end of the race, the two gentlemen that helped me run the race, or put on the race, they were amazed with our community, they absolutely loved it. Next year they're telling us to plan on eight hundred runners and so it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. It has been estimated that every runner from out of town will bring about one person with them. I think it was point seven five people, so I guess they were my height. And then... So that was roughly an additional two hundred and fifty people on top of the family members that came with... To support their either kids or their runners. I saw a lot of people at McDonald's before, McDonald's coffee before even six in the morning, saw a lot of people out eating dinner, they had to buy gas. I heard from Delta Physical Therapy that the hotel was packed out. So I have no idea how much money was spent, but there was a lot. I know I spent a lot of money. Oh, it's time. Can we pass the baskets? Just very briefly, next year it's February eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and thank you. It's always nice that Galt gets on the map for something great, so thank you so much.
Pastor Rick, just let me say, uh... Thank you for everything you do in this community, you're a wonderful leader in our community and I still appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, you too.
Thank you. Lovely to chat. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, the concerned citizen of Galt and it's a great city and it's a community of character and I think it's getting better all the time. I just wanted to mention tonight, I didn't hear it mentioned in the beginning, that we had a local person pass away. The name was Pat Derby, she was in charge of Paws, performing animal welfare, and she was in Galt for, seems like forever, with her elephants and bears and cats and everything under the sun with animals. And my wife worked for her for many years and she finally moved part of the operation up to, oh, I guess it's Amador County, I believe it was. Anyway, it was called the Arc Two Thousand, that's where all the elephants were. And I just wanted to make sure that publicly she was honored, I just wanted to say she was a great woman. She was a member of the Rotary in this town, she was very active, so was Ed, her partner. He's the one that, I believe, started the running of the berries, if you want to call it that, and it was very popular for the kids to pull off these strawberries off these outfits that the council people run around in and the kids had a lot of fun and I believe it's still maybe going on. But it was just something that I thought I should bring up, that she's done a great job and her partner Ed is going to continue it up there in Arc Two Thousand. She's done a lot for the animals and Amanda Blake, I don't know, maybe if that name isn't familiar with you, but maybe Miss Kitty is, who was under gunsmoke and that's who she... Her partner was, that's when she started. And there's quite a history to her and her life, but I just wanted tonight to bring it up in just remembrance of her and make sure that other people understand and maybe watching on the camera that they didn't hear, it's been on the news, but then again, you may not even look, watch TV anymore. So, anyway, thank you for letting me bring it up, appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Al, I kind of have a funny story I want to tell you about, um, Paws over there. When I moved back from Arizona, I went to live with my sister in Harold's. And one night I was... When I first gotten there, I heard some noise outside and I said to my sister, "I swear I heard an elephant." And she said, "Yeah, there's Paws right around the corner." And it was just really amazing to me to go over there and see that sight with those bears and those ants and those lions and she was a wonderful person, she took great care of any creature that came in there and worked really hard all of her life and I take my hat off to her and I think she should be remembered.
Well, I appreciate the kind words. My wife went to work every morning and where can you go to work and hear elephants and bears in the morning? You know, it's just amazing. So she was a trainer of these animals and now she was an advocate of keeping them and she did a great job, so appreciate that, thank you.
She was a great person. Jean Davenport?
Hi, I'm Jean Davenport, I'm a citizen of Galt and I'm going to spend the first couple of seconds, about three minutes, because I think if I had five, I'd get in more trouble. So I just want to thank the council for going back and putting that alternate back on the planning commission. And I think it was really unprofessional for somebody on this body to criticize a person that came up and volunteered their time for four years, sit on that commission and take part in it sincerely and then be criticized because he asked questions that they didn't like. That's very unprofessional and I thought it was you, Ms. Payne, and I was offended by that. I was that planning commissioner and I gave four years and I showed up and I participated like I said. There was a city attorney at every meeting, not once did he tell me I was out of line, not once did he tell me I was unprofessional. And for you to come back three or four years later and say something like that, I'm offended. And Mr. Champion, for you to say it's not needed, I think it's disingenuous because you're... The office that you held was all about getting tax dollars into this city. And I know I aggravated some people on the Walmart issue, but to this day, I still don't think we need a Super Walmart. We're spending two million dollars for roundabouts for a Fortune Five Hundred company that can afford to put new highways in, but yet the taxpayers are going to foot the bill for that. I think it's disingenuous. And I also believe if one business closes because that store opens, it should be on the people's head who approved it, because we do not need a Super Walmart. Walmart's fine, I even said it, I sat on the commission and said it. Put a ninety thousand square foot Walmart in here, no problem. But to be criticized for doing something I took sincerely, I was offended and I really hope you apologize to me someday, but I think I have it coming, I really do. Because all I did was volunteer my time and effort for this city. To this day, I still put Galt first. I love this city. I don't have your ideology, I don't share it, and that has nothing to do with it. But the fact of the matter is, I showed up on a regular basis, I think on this one meeting in the four years I was appointed to it. So I just think, I'm glad you guys are going to put it back and I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to apply it again. And I'm going to apply it every year and I hope I can make the hell out of all of it. Thanks. Thanks, Jean.
Let me say something. Mr. Davenport, before you leave, let me just do say something to you that I am not happy that you're offended. I, of course, didn't mention any names as you did, but regardless of the conversation between us, I've always had a good relationship with you and I would not want to offend you personally and I do apologize. I understand. Okay, now we're going to approve the consent calendar, but first of all, we'll start with you, Mark, number four.
Thank you. Please, I've got to coin in here for a second. I read through the agreement and I agree with most of it, just have one question for you concerning the installation of the sewer tap on the Fort Main. So the way I understood and read that, the Catholic Church or the diocese will be picking up the cost for that extension, correct, if it goes to the correction facility?
That's correct, um, and I've had to learn the history on this item by reading some prior actions and there was city-initiated litigation that also named Roman Catholic Church because they had allowed an outfall line to be built on their property. As part of settling that agreement, there were fees paid and capacity buy-in fees from the correctional training facility, which had burgeoning from its small size to a much larger facility that we enjoy today, but unfortunately had overlooked paying any sewer fees that went along with that. And so that was all worked out better part of seven, eight years ago, I believe. And then subsequently, we leased property from the Roman Catholic Church for our seasonal discharge and disposal of excess liquid and as well as spreading of our treated sludge. So it turned into a good working relationship. However, there is still the outfall line crossing their property and as part of this agreement and, um, Mr. Clarkson is here, as well as probably the city attorney, to have some further back history on this, but my understanding of this provision is to allow the future relocation of the existing outfall, just to relocate. outfall, just to relocate it around the Catholic property so they could use other uses without reserving this easement for off-site sewer. And we're, with the current pipeline project that's underway, would be putting a tap in, which would just be a stubout for a future connection to that Forest Main. But any further work to relocate the pipe and reconnect it would be at the Roman Catholic Church's expense.
So, if I understand correctly, the existing will stay in place, and if for some reason they decide they want it moved, they'll take care of the costs.
That's my understanding.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And then Sean, you wanted to pull, I'm sorry.
You wanna move to accept it?
Move to accept it.
That's okay. I used to go the other one first. Fine.
The recommendation.
Yeah, would you read the recommendation, please?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a successor agreement to the previous lease agreement with the Roman Catholic bishop for use of property owned by the Roman Catholic bishop adjacent to the city's wastewater treatment plant.
Move to accept.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now Sean, you're on. The treasurer's report for the period ending December two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just wanna say, I see about a dozen Liberty Ranch High School students here. I welcome them. Glad to see that you're all here. Now, the thing I wanna speak about tonight is actually not about the treasurer's report, but it's about a local bank that we have here in town. The city puts a great emphasis of investing locally. And actually, we have a little bit over thirteen million dollars invested in local banks. One of those banks is called Premier West Bank. And in about October timeframe, there was another bank called American West Bank. Now, don't confuse that with Bank of the West or West America Bank. Okay? This one's called American West Bank. Anyway, American West and Premier West decided that they wanted to merger, to merge, based upon shareholder approval. That shareholder meeting happened today. Well, as a result from that shareholder meeting, to make a long story short, there wasn't enough votes to actually approve that merger. Okay? But what actually, the action that the shareholders took was, in fact, to delay that vote or delay the final results for another three weeks to give American West and Premier West a little bit more time to obtain yes votes. Okay? So, what I'm trying to tell you is that the, that Premier West may merge with another bank called American West Bank. We will know something, I would say, more definitive come March thirteenth. In the meantime, it's still, of course, business as usual at Premier West Bank. Now, what this has got to do with us here is, one, it's, of course, within the city limits, but the city has a million dollars invested with Premier West Bank. Now, if the merger goes through, American West will certainly honor that. Even if the merger does not go through, the CD, which is a two-year CD, the rate is one point oh five percent, and it matures this July, July the fourteenth of this year. It's all collateralized, which means there's bonds that are, that are out of third-party custodian, so the safety of it is not in question. So, anyway, I just kinda wanted to let you know as far as what was currently going on. You may see some news articles about it in the papers, probably starting tomorrow. But that's kind of the story. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, otherwise, if I ask that you approve the treasurer's report for December twelfth. Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Quick question.
Yeah.
If the merger goes through, do you see it improving or decreasing the amount of percentages as far as continuation on that bond? Those will go higher than or lower than?
As far as the interest rate?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no. That interest rate's gonna drop. There's no, there's no place that I'm aware of that you can get one percent on a CD for a very short period of time, like, say, one year.
So it'll be good for one point five percent till July?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. The interest rate does not change. It was, it was a deal that we invested the money now eighteen months ago at the one point oh five percent. Even then, it was a special rate that we, the city, received.
Thank you.
Sure.
And it would seem to me, knowing that that big of a decision was to be made, that everybody would show up, was supposed to show up. So, that would make it a little suspicious for the vote. You said you didn't have, they didn't have enough folks to...
Yeah, there was, long story short, there's ten million, approximately ten million shares.
Yeah.
Four point seven million of those shares voted yes for the merger. Two point eight million voted no. And two and a half million of those shares just simply did not vote. So, the additional three weeks is to try to influence those two and a half million shares to vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Either yea or nay. Just get 'em to vote.
Right.
And so that's what the issue is.
Go one way or the other.
That's what the issue is. Yeah, to make a commitment, one way or another.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Okay, so now, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report for the period ending December two thousand and twelve?
Move to second.
Is there any further discussion?
Listen.
Okay, call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Liz, can you please read the rest of the items on the consent calendar?
Yes, the first item, minutes, approval of the minutes of special meetings of January twenty-second, January twenty-ninth, and February fifth, and the regular meeting of February fifth. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, second amendment to the agreement for South County Transit Link sharing of responsibilities and costs. Number four was discussed. Number five, ordinance establishing development agreement procedures. And the treasurer's report number six was already discussed.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're at the city council offices reports. We're going to report on our strategic plan. Every six months, we get together, city council members and staff, and Jason and Steve, and we work on what we'd like to do, what we've accomplished in the last six months and what we'd like to do in the next six months. This is our first meeting since that meeting. And so I'd like to just have each council member say some of the things that we would like to accomplish in the next six months. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Singleton, and he's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Campion. And he's going to give us how we're gonna enhance economic development.
I'm simply gonna read what the what column is, which is the actual action we're working on. First one is present to city council for action, possible negotiated terms with the CBS Outdoor advertising for funding of an electronic city sign on Highway ninety-nine. The next item is present to city council for action, the development agreement for the entertainment complex. Also, complete the secret review for the entertainment complex. Identify and follow up with at least five first-tier businesses as a result of the Buxton Study. Update the economic development roadmap, having it certified by the Economic Development Administration as a comprehensive economic development strategy. Present to city council, and lastly, present to city council for consideration, options for the reduction of non-residential traffic impact fees.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna go to Councilmember Cruz, who's going to read the improved financial stability and maintenance of our reserves.
We're going to be submitting approximately one point six million dollars in ROPS, which stands for Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, to the State Department of Finance to avoid a ten thousand dollar a day penalty. Having studied the feasibility of refinancing existing bonds, make recommendations to the city council for action on those bonds. Contingent bond timely receipt of plans from Walmart, issue city permits for the Walmart project. Identify and recommend to the city council for action new or revised service fees, if any, to be charged by the city. Present to the city council for action the city's reserve policy to ensure compliance with gas fee. Obtain a long-term use agreement for the regional law enforcement training facility.
Thank you. Councilmember Singleton will now tell us what we wanna do to provide services and facilities that are needs, that are responsive to community needs.
And we are, I'm gonna read what, be quick like these other two gentlemen were. Presents, present to city council for direction possible restoration of the J.C. Hall for use as a joint-use community center with the gathering place. Next one would be recommend to the Public Safety Committee and to the city council for direction, city programs and funding options for at-risk use, at-risk youth. And last would be present three top priorities for addressing deferred maintenance of city buildings and facilities, including cost estimates.
And last but not least, Councilmember Payne, I'm gonna have, after I read number one, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna have you improve community involvement and two-way communication. Number one is hold the state of the city address, and I will be doing that with the Chamber of Commerce, along with Jason, Mayorman, our city manager. And that will be this Thursday at Brewster's at eleven-thirty, if anyone would like to come and figure rolling along. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, present to the city council for action a city social media policy. Schedule, plan, and hold the annual volunteer recognition luncheon. Schedule, plan, and hold the annual safety fair, including a May as Sycma Bike rodeo and an Isle of My Park event. Having studied the feasibility of establishing a community coalition consisting of service clubs, churches, and not-for-profit organizations to coordinate community events and activities and obtain volunteers, will make a recommendation to the city council for action. Develop at least one social media site, like Facebook or Twitter, to be used by the City of Galt. Coordinate an Isle of My Park event at Walker Park. And lastly, develop an intranet for employees to enhance internal communication.
Thank you. It may seem like a lot, but this is usually what we have about every six months, and we usually get everything done. So I'm pretty positive that all of these things will get done. And we will keep you updated every month with specific things that are progressing. Anything you wanna add, Jason?
No, I think you guys got it covered.
Okay.
Very good.
So next is the subject of discretionary funds, and that would be me. And I'm asking the council to approve my discretionary funds in the amount of a thousand dollars to go to the Foothill Canine Association. I want it to be known, though, that the Foothill Canine Association has their own Galt, what's the word I'm looking for, their own monies going to the Galt Fund. Thank you. Going to, for canine for the Galt Police Department. And so I would like approval to put my thousand dollars into the canine fund for a new police dog here in Galt.
Any questions?
I think it's great.
Any, any pardons?
Motion of that effect.
Okay, so I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Now, we're on to the city attorney's office. Steve, we're gonna talk about a policy regarding the donation of park benches and trees.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The city periodically gets requests for donations or gets, offers of donations. And we actually had a few of them, a few of these offers in the fall this year, which prompted us to consider that we needed a policy to set up a more formalized method of dealing with these offers of donations. So, this policy is just directed at park benches and trees. And the purpose of the policy is to balance the desires of those people that are offering to donate trees or benches to the city with the city's need to ensure that the placement of those trees and benches is done in an appropriate manner and preserves the use of the city's facilities for other members of our community. So, the policy before you tonight first sets up a procedure whereby people interested in making donations of trees or benches would submit a, an application to the City Public Works Department indicating the donor's name, the purpose of the donation, the type of donation. And then they would typically meet with the public works staff to see if they can come up with a, an appropriate place for the tree and/or the bench, and talk about the price for the tree or the bench and what, and the appropriate location. And then, assuming that we can work those details out, then the donor would pay for the tree or bench. And upon receipt of the funds, then the city would move forward with the placement of the, for the tree or the bench. The other item that the policy sets forth is a provision that says that there might be circumstances where a, the city may not want to accept a donation. A, an example of that might be if somebody wanted to make a donation in memory or in honor of a convicted felon, for example. So, I mean, there might be an example where we would not want to take a donation. And this policy makes it clear that the city has a right to refuse donations. It also indicates that we need to receive full payment for donated property, like the tree or the bench, before we would actually order and place the property. So there's no public funds involved in the replacement of these items. And the other important item that's set forth in this policy is that the city does not have an obligation to repair or replace the property if it is, in fact, damaged, or in the case of a tree, if it were to die in the, in the future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a, it's a pretty short policy, but it's just to give us some general guidelines in order to handle future requests that we do get in this area. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. I assume that this doesn't just mean strictly benches or trees. I mean, I'm assuming that it would be shrubbery, like, you know, we have roses that run down a lot dedicated to certain individuals. So this would also include all the shrubbery, that type of thing.
Right. Yeah, I think if somebody wanted to, wanted to donate a rose bush, then it would certainly cover, cover a rose bush. But except for minor items like trees and bushes and benches, any other offer of donation would continue to come to the city council for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
And then, in the past, it's been the beautification committee that's basically done the rose bushes around town.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm just saying, we'll follow them to this ordinance to the...
Any other questions?
Move to the step.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And Liz, would you read the Public Works Department one, please?
Next item under Public Works, authorize negotiation and execution of amendment number two to task order number one of the master agreement with West Yost Associates for conceptual design of near-term wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, we're putting up a overhead presentation for you. Tonight is sort of a small step on a large journey. And we have a specific item for a approval or authorization for us to proceed in an expedited manner with a task order under a current master task order agreement we have with West Yost Associates. But this is part, we wanted to spend some time and make a brief presentation to you tonight to give you the background for a series of recommendations that you're gonna be receiving over the period of the next six months ahead. And we'll go into that in a little more detail in just a moment. But I wanted to set this up for Mr. Clarkson, who'll be making the presentation. But we're facing some very tight timeframes to meet some regulatory requirements by the year 2015. They are gonna require another series of improvements to our wastewater treatment plant. And I, I know that we've, you before me, or my watch, lived through some major improvements for the 2010 commissioning of the new tertiary treatment... major improvements, uh, for the 2010, uh, commissioning of the new tertiary treatment. Well, we're looking at, um, more of similar things, uh, to continue to meet ever-evolving regulatory requirements. And, uh, we'll go into a little more detail in just a moment, but I did want to point out that, um, we are going to be recommending a series of actions that would, we would recommend an expedited timeframe, and tonight would be an example of that, where we're asking for authorization to negotiate and execute an agreement that isn't before you, uh, so that we can pick up, uh, three to four weeks in the process. We're at a point where weeks and a few months can make a huge difference in the affordability of the project, uh, in that we're going to be looking at a very compressed construction timeframe. And every week that we can add to the construction window, uh, will ultimately save the city money in terms of construction costs, uh, within a very tight timeframe. So, um, if you are willing to, uh, to agree to expedited procedures, we do hope to ultimately save several months, uh, in the upfront design process through expedited procurement, and then, uh, able to move directly into construction without further delays. Uh, specifically, we're going to be asking that, in a series of steps, uh, tonight being the first, that, uh, to your, so, so would pleasure, uh, have the pleasure of approving our recommendation, uh, that we would, um, continue with the path that we've set forth with West Yost Associates under their master agreement entered into approximately a year ago, uh, that we proceed through the complete design process without going back out for additional procurement. And that is certainly compatible with the, um, qualifications-based selection process that was previously used and with state contract law for professional consulting agreements. With that, uh, we'll get a lot of words there. We'll, I'd like to have Mark Clarkson give you an overview of why we think these steps are important.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Mark Clarkson, Utilities Manager. Sorry about the throat, I've been yelling at everybody today. Not really. No, just, um, put that three-minute timer on there for me. I can, I can just get, get right through this. Well, Steve did a pretty good, uh, uh, background on why we're here tonight. Just want to add a few more things, uh, to this recommendation. The, because the conceptual design is going to help us, as I get further down here and we discuss a little bit, this conceptual design's going to help us refine a lot of things that we're going through right now in the draft facility master plan and the draft EIR. And it's going to support, um, our findings and support, uh, the final plan that gets adopted by the City Council. We're here basically because of regulatory requirements. Give you a little history lesson, back in 210, we got a discharge permit that the city had been working on a little over two years. With that discharge permit, it gave us new limits that we were already under construction for what's called a tertiary project, and I'll show you a couple of pictures of that in a second. And it also gave us deadlines for future, uh, discharge requirements. And that's 215, so, so we got a permit that not only said, okay, you're going to meet this right now, starting September 2010, but in five years from now, you have to meet these, uh, limits. They're mandatory limits. Um, some of the limits, uh, revolve around copper, silver, arsenic, uh, other inorganics, and, uh, nitrogen. And the biggest hit that we're taking on this, as far as when we look at facility improvements that are needed, are arsenic and nitrogen, uh, improvement, uh, improvements that we have to do to be able to bring down those limits to meet the 215 discharge requirements. And when you look at the schedule, it's, it's, it gave us five years back then. We don't have five years now. When I first came on board, we had already lost a year. So we looked at our schedule and, and we looked at the different tasks. This is, um, this is a tertiary project that just went in, sorry, excuse me, I'll back up a little bit. This went in, um, was online in 2011. This was your, approximately a $20 million project that the city was, uh, involved in. It provided, uh, features such as, uh, additional screening, um, some additional disinfection system and some sludge, uh, handling, biosolids handling. Those systems are still going to be effective for the 215 and future discharge requirements. Those systems right there, we're not going to be affecting, or being, uh, being used to modify, uh, much at all. We will get a little bit more on the biosolids, but, but, uh, not much. It's, it's pretty much what we built several years ago is still good and, uh, and should give us a good, uh, life service. The tasks that we developed, and when we saw what we needed for the 215, September 215 compliance, and that's down here at the bottom, I mean, that is, that is the key that we're focusing on, because it's, it, it really limited us and told us, we have to have everything done before then. We looked at, we'd have to look at the existing plant, we'd have to look at, identify whatever improvements, improvements we were going to need. We researched, uh, documents that the city had, like the general, the adopted, recently adopted general plan. We looked at the environmental review was going to need, and all the design and construction that's going to be needed in here, and we kind of backed up and we came up, okay, here's our critical dates and here's our critical times that we had there. When we went into, we immediately went into consultant selection process, because staff doesn't have the facility, or doesn't have the staff to do this, we'd have to gear up about 20 engineers, and I think the amount of engineers we have right now are more than enough, you know, to, um, we don't need to impact the city anymore. Anyway, with the consultant selection, when we looked at the RFP process, we looked at, that, we needed to have a flexibility for the city, and that's how we approached it, uh, flexibility to give the, the city the chance to either stay with one, uh, consult, design consultant through the project from the planning to the design to the construction service, or if we wanted to, we could separate from that and, and do additional, um, uh, do additional consultants for, for different things. But at that time, you know, we prepared for it, West Yost was, uh, selected from the different, uh, parts that we had reviewing there. We did a master service agreement that would allow us to be able to, to continue with the same with West Yost in the services for planning, for design and construction services. And then we also issued Task Order Number One, which was a comprehensive, um, master plan of the, of the treatment plant plus the environmental documentation that's going to support it. And this environmental documentation is going to be strong, it's going to allow us to go out. The, the consultant says that they have, in these similar situations, that the environmental has been able to be used for 15 to 20 years out. So this is a very comprehensive, uh, uh, system that we have on the EIR process for our future. Now, every day, every time we have stuff coming in from West Yost and that we're meeting with West Yost and we're reviewing their, their projects, we're continually reviewing their responsiveness, their ability to deliver timely work. I mean, they're on, they're on the edge all the time, because we, we need to get this project done, we need them to work with us, and we're, and so far, they've been pretty effective in that. In the project phases, you see a lot of months that we put down there, that, that's pretty aggressive. In most cases, you can add another six months to that if we had time. But we don't have time, I mean, six months on each phase. We don't have time for that. We have to crunch it down, we have to be right on top of the project, and several of these are going to have to overlap. What we're doing in Facilities Master Plan, Environmental Review, is an overlap. We'll be doing the, uh, development of financial plan while we're doing the final, the design of the plant. Those will overlap. And so there's things that we're going to have to be continuing to do and, and juggling the balls as we move along. The, the, uh, I like pictures once in a while, I just throw them in there because it slows me down, and I get to see my home out there. Um, these facilities that we have out here, you know, you know, a, a lot of that was stopped back in 210 and 211 when the tertiary project went in, that that was the end-all for the wastewater plant. Well, regulatory people didn't let us do that. And the other thing is, is age. A lot of these, uh, items, like this one up here in the top left-hand corner, that's thir, that's almost 35 years old. It will be 35 years old by 2015. The other items you see there are going to be 25 years old by 2015. They pretty much tour, are towards the end of their life cycle, uh, uh, review and needs for the plant. There's rehabilitation that's going to be needed of them, there's replacement, and there's upgrades that are going to happen to it. This oxidation ditch is the thing, oops, should've told me which one it's, no. Oxidation dish, the big river that goes around in circles like this, that, that's where mostly organics are reduced there. And that's the key, that's the heart of the system. Um, and that's being looked at as, as needing modification. The way the system is right now, we can't meet 215, we can't even get close to it. So we've got to go in and modify a lot of these facilities in order to meet the 215 requirements. Future milestones, so many of these things, we have to come back to the City Council and request direction, request approvals or adoptions, and I just listed a few of these, uh, a few of these items that we're going to be going over, uh, over the next two and a half years. Right now, we're at the conceptual design portion. What that will do will give us, as I said earlier, strengthen the Facility Master Plan and the draft, and strengthen the draft EIR. Now, in a couple of weeks, those draft plans are going to be out for public comment. And, oh, I, there's a period of time they have to be out for public comment, we have to bring them back, review what the public comment was, and then, and then, uh, look at addressing them or additional things that we'll have to do there. Once we have the public comment period closed, we're going to come to the City Council, and we're going to have a study session sometime in May. And the count, and the session's going to go on for only probably two hours, but you'll think it'll be 24 to 30 days long, because so many things to cover. We have so many alternatives that we looked at, so many, uh, so many numbers that we've crunched, we've even modified a little bit of what we, we thought that the growth period would happen in the, in the city over the next 10 to 15 years. So we've got to address all that, and we'll walk you step by step during that study session. About a month later, we'll come back and, uh, and we'll take your, your comments, and we'll prepare a, a final environmental impact report and facility master plan, and then we've got to come right back after that with a design contract. Either we go the direction with Task Two with our existing, um, uh, designer, or existing consultant, or we go out and do a different direction. We have the flexibility at that time. We have financial plans, we have selection of instruction bids. All of these things are going to be coming back to you for discussion, and you'll be kept apprised of, of all of these items that we have. Going right back to the recommendations, ditto what he said, I think I'm well over my three-minute time limit. And I'll slow down. No more pictures. Any questions?
No, that was a great slide. I have a comment. You're scaring me when you're saying that you're overlapping and having to rush through all this. Um, can you give me a little reassurance that you're not going to make some big mistake that's going to cost us a bunch of money, or?
We are-
Why do you want to make that happen?
We are-
Briefly, tell me.
We are making sure that nothing sits in anybody's in-basket. If things move, when we, when we have to go out and, and gather, we'll just give you an example, gather data from the plant, we go out and immediately start that, and, uh, and we do the extensive that we need for the engineering principles and the thing, and planning principles that we need. Nothing's sitting anywhere. I mean, it's, it's at times at West Yost, I, I know they have a, they have, they have a caller ID, and they, they just, they just sigh when they see me calling, because I don't want to see anything sit and move. So it's not a rush, but it's just, we get to a point, we know that it takes so many hours to do this, that's what's expected. We're at that time period, where are we at, guys? If we're not there, let's, uh, let's get caught up. And a lot of it has to do with late nights, weekends, uh, to review a lot of this stuff. And West Yost is doing that as well as staff. Um, so we don't want to miss anything, and as we come here with the next, uh, when we come here and have our study session, you're going to see the comprehensive data that we put together. Um, you're going to, we'll, we'll take you step by step to show you everything we've looked at, every piece of equipment that was looked at at the plant, uh, all of the options, the environmental options, all of the options that we had before us, to make sure that we tie everything into meeting the 215 deadline also, which I didn't talk about much on, is, is seeing what happens in the future and making sure those pieces fit together, so we don't throw anything away, so we don't make the mistakes. Back when the project, the tertiary project was first developed, and I know I'm not being very short here, but back when we had the tertiary project, we didn't look at the plant, we didn't do Facility Master Plan, it wasn't done, it wasn't all stepwise, so you could see how additional regulatory requirements might affect the plant, that wasn't looked at. Here, we're doing it, and so it's very comprehensive at this point.
My other question is, how come we're in this crunch? What made us have to work under these conditions?
Well, even in 215, if, if staff at that time, September 215, said, we're going to start this day and not lose a day, uh, that gave you five years to do this project. That's still a crunch time. You know, it's not as severe as, when I came on, I came on about a year later, and no movement had happened, basically, on it, so we lost a year. But we can still, we can do it to make sure that we, we get the city, uh, for the best buck for improvements out there. And that's the idea here. It's not, we're trying to rush this through, it's, it's some places that we can kind of take shortcuts without reducing the quality, without reducing, or without, um, extending our costs, or, or increasing our costs, we're going to do it to try to hit the 215 deadline. It's still, when I came on, it was still a three-and-a-half-year project out, and that was doable, but we had no time to delay. We couldn't delay a month here and a month here and a month here, because then we'd miss it.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like that you're, um, trying to be ahead of the game by just gathering your information that you have for the next phase of everything that you need to do, so you're not waiting the time in between to get the information you need to go ahead.
Absolutely, and, and the other thing is that when we're done with this project, we have a Facility Master Plan and environmental documents that's going to help us, that if growth does start happening again, um, and if we get industrial or we get commercial growth starting to happen, we're, we're going to be able to just step right into that with, without much delay. So, so we're setting it up, not just for the short time term till 215, but for the long, long haul, too.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add briefly, what Mark closed with is, this Facilities Master Plan was initiated because we knew we had some short-term upgrades, but we wanted to make sure that we didn't rush with sort of a tunnel vision on short-term and then begin to miss some longer-term situations. And so what we said is, listen, let's take a step back. Part of the initial, uh, delay, if you please, was an intentional, let's take a look at where we need to be over the course of our 20-year general plan, and how will we get there from here, to make sure that our early investments are wise investments for the long run, and then to, uh, I know you've got members of the audience that are very concerned that existing users aren't paying for future growth, that they, they pay their own way. Well, part of that is identifying what's needed now and what can wait and be borne by future development and connection fees, uh, and then properly apportioning that in our rates for current or future users. And, uh, so that's part of this Facilities Master Plan, uh, and the DIR is covering the entire general plan build-out, which is the other part of the Master Facilities Plan. So we're, we're running, but we're trying to get outside the box in terms of being smart, rather than sort of government bureaucracy as usual, where we sort of do a linear, you know, wait till one thing's done, even think about starting the next, trying to look at where do we need to be and when do we need to get, take steps to get there, and if that means that we're doing a couple of things in parallel to, uh, be more efficient, then we're going to be recommending a little bit of out-of-the-box strategies to get there.
Thank you.
Quick question over here.
I've got it. Okay, go ahead.
I know we have regulations as far as the arsenic we release for, and then our drinking water, correct? And we are well below that, if I understand correctly, now that we have in the deep well. What is the difference between that and what we're regulated to release after we're done treating the water? I'm confused here. Why are we still pulling arsenic out of the water? It's a natural occurring element.
Well, the, the basin plan, I'm not going to go into this, because this will really put everybody to sleep. Basin plan adopted a limit for arsenic, and that led for discharge into, into our receiving streams, you know, Consooner River, the Delta and everything, and that limit is exactly the same limit as drinking water standards. Uh, the same with nitrogen, they adopted that limit, and so they're making all of the other waste discharge in the, in the area, the county and this entire basin, to meet those drinking, basically their drinking water limits. But that's what we have to meet, that's what they've adopted.
So even though we're meeting it at this point, where the drinking water is, when it's getting done at this point, it's back up where it shouldn't be?
Well, okay, real quick, what happens is we pull it out up here-
Right.
-and the wastewater, and the water end of it sends you some really good drinking water. You guys agree, great water, right? You don't use bottled water, this is great water. And, uh, so we pull it out, but then we put it back in the sanitary. And so that big bunch of arsenic gets down to the treatment plant. It doesn't get into our drinking water, but it does get back into the, in the treatment-
Arsenic gets pulled out, the filter, then it gets back, backwashed down-
Down sewer. That explains, thank you.
And part of the next phase will be, since we already have it pulled out, is to further modify our treatment to not backwash into the sewer, but to catch that and dry it and treat it as a solid waste rather than a liquid waste back down in the sewer. We only pull it out once.
When we pull it out, we keep it out. That's what we're-
Councilmembers.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you explained the rush part of it, because in the general public, as soon as you say rush through some things, they think you're trying to put something over. Uh, and as I also wanted to make sure, as you explained, that we are kept in- And I also wanted to make sure, as you explained, that we are kept in the information loop as far as each stage of these processes. On your evaluate plant capacities and efficiencies, how do you estimate that? Do you, I mean, the expected growth, you have expected growth estimates for so many per year or five years or what?
Well, we look at the general plan. The general plan...
The general plan has something to do with it.
It shows what the projections are. And we sat down with the planning director and we discussed the projections. We'll get into it in our study session, but the projections had it going like this, but we're kind of seeing something happening like this. And so we come to a happy medium on what that would be. But we would be ready if, with this master plan and the environmental impact report that we have, if something happens like the general plan proposed, we will be able to meet that.
Okay.
And we have direction for that. It's just the timing. Does it happen out in 2018 or does it happen in 2025? You know, but it'll be typically the same process that we select over the course of the next couple of months.
As long as we're well prepared, that's my main concern. Okay, thank you. What is the per billion for arsenic anyway?
Ten.
It's ten.
Just a couple of questions. So I totally understand this. The schedule is being driven by the arsenic and nitrogen discharge elimination, correct? That's what the September 215 requirement is. So that's the hard issue there. The other items, such as the master plan adoption, those are not fixed with any other requirement of the state permit. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and our goal, though, is to make sure that our short-term investments...
Sure.
...fit into the long-term plan.
I think that's a great concept. I mean, I agree with you 100%. There's no sense in, you know, getting halfway down the road and deciding if you made a mistake.
Right.
So I agree with that. The, in looking at the schedule, you show the facilities master plan coming back in June, the draft DIR going out in March. Is the DIR behind schedule versus the facilities master plan? Is the master plan on schedule because you give it yourself four months? I know that doesn't seem like a lot of time, but for your sequel review, that's, you know, over double what the normal is, at least for...
Excuse me, the DIR process is pretty long and we've already went to different agencies to have them review the draft or some of the components of the DIR. And one of the agencies, NOAA, requires some additional review. And so we came to this council last October to do an amendment number one of this task order to address those concerns from outside agencies. So we've been kind of moving through. We weren't just going to wait till we put out public and then receive other agency comments. We went ahead and were proactive to get their comments before we go out with this public review here.
I guess my last comment is, you know, I'm not comfortable approving a contract without saying what the cost is. And I understand this is not ordinary business and that you do have a time constraint. I guess I would only encourage that we have actual bids in the future. That's my only comment.
A couple of comments on that. We addressed, we had the same concerns when we did the agreement and task order last year, last February. We had a task in there on task order one to do the conceptual design work, but we didn't know what we were going to be putting numbers up against. We needed to see what was going to fall out, you know, what projects might be proposed and stuff. So we pulled that task out and said, "We're not going to do it at this time." And so now we're coming back and saying, "Now, this is the time to do that particular task." Now, as far as in engineering, now with that set aside, in engineering, because of state contract law and such, can't do professional engineering bids. You don't go out there and select bids and take the lowest bid. It's just, I don't make the law. That's the way it is. We have to look at their experience, their ability to perform, and a whole bunch of other things.
And then negotiate a contract.
And then you negotiate. And so what we're doing here is, we did have that as a task, but we said, "Not now. We're not going to put any money to it until we come back to the council." And that's what we're doing at this point, coming back and saying, "Let's finish up that task order one." And this is part of the, part of that task.
And I understand the difference in the process is that normally you have a budgeted amount. Previously, you negotiate, then you come to council and council awards. That's the difference in the process. So I understand.
Yes, it's a little different than the procurement process we have right now. The estimate that we have there is what I've put together. I believe that we will be well under that for this conceptual design, but I needed to put a number so you guys could see, so the council could see what we wouldn't go over. And we hope to be well under that.
And if I may, we'll certainly, as part of the study session, report back to you on what we were able to negotiate and then be talking with you about task order two and how we want to approach that and give you some options and what the exposures to risk are.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Liz, would you please read for me? Adopt a resolution to, number one, authorize the public works director to negotiate scope and cost for amendment number two to task order number one of the master agreement with West Joe's Associates for development of preliminary 10% design documents for wastewater treatment plant upgrades needed to meet 2015 regulatory requirements. And number two, authorize the city manager to execute the resulting amendment number two, provided costs do not exceed $325,000. And number three, appropriate $325,000 from wastewater fund, $276,250 and Fund 014, $48,750, fund balances to cover anticipated costs associated with amendment number two.
Move to the dot.
Before you have the roll call, there are public comments. Say, public comments and speaker sheets?
I have no speaker sheets, but I can have a member of the public.
Rick Walters. I was on the oversight committee on the sewer in 2006, 2007, and we discussed this arsenic and nitrogen problem then. And what we suggested to this city and staff, which you incorporated in that $25 that eventually came out to be known as the upgrade fee. And so you telling us that it's, we're under a rush condition right now is just not, absolutely not true. We discussed it in 2007. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
One second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Payne?
Hi.
Councilmember Champion?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Powers?
Hi.
Okay, city clerks report. Before you, it's one committee appointment. This appoint, the vacancy is an appointment to be made by Mayor Powers for the commission on aging. Here is one letter in your packet. And at this time, I ask for an appointment if you so desire. We will appoint, I'm sorry, the gentleman's name. Alvin Roberts, thank you. Are you there, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Well, you're in. You're welcome. And thank you very much for stepping up. We do really appreciate when citizens want to get involved in the city and we welcome you and look forward to working with you.
You're in like Flynn.
And just for the public, we do have some additional vacancies on some of our committees. If anyone's interested, please contact the city clerk's office. There's one vacancy on the abdication committee. Off the top of my head, that's all I can think of. I think you just called.
Measure R.
Measure R committee has a vacancy. Anyway, if anyone's interested in serving on one of the committees and getting involved, please give the city clerk's office a call. Thank you, Liz. And now we're going to go to comments by staff.
I don't believe we have any comments this evening.
Wow.
Wow.
I know.
Okay, and comments by city council. And I'll start with councilmember Champion.
Only thing to report, I attended the STA meeting last Thursday. It was interesting and I think I'll enjoy it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Actually, I have nothing other than attended the fundraiser last week at Mount Mike's Pizza for the K-9 education. It was a huge success, I think more so than they expected it to be, and I was very happy with the turnout.
Great, nice, awesome. Vice Mayor Singleton.
Of course, I'm not allowed to go by without me saying something. I also attended the fundraiser for Officer Ton last week. Great turnout. They were mad because I started at my Harley during the live TV broadcast, but oh, well. But I do have to tell you something real quick. A compliment to the citizens of Gulf. I was with somebody who was employed by the city last week, and I'll try to make as sure as possible. This person was, and I'm not going to mention any names, was going to leave our city and look for another place to work because he didn't, I guess, have good vibes here. He said, "After this community came together as it did," and this includes the schools, Liberty Ranch, kids of Gulf, Esther Lita, and our citizens in general, after Officer Ton was killed, he was just blown away. He could not believe how quickly and how committed this community is to supporting one another. And that just gave me chills. He had said that it turned his opinion around of Gulf 360. He said that there is no other place he would rather work because this community's stuck together so well and just supported one another so well. So I compliment our citizens. You guys are awesome. You guys are just wonderful to live with and amongst. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Payne.
Well, I attended the Farm Bureau dinner and helped to celebrate their 2012 Golden State Hall of Honor Award for most outstanding program of work among all counties. Also, attended the Sacramento Region Food System Collaborative to just keep believing that because we're an agricultural community, that it's going to pay off. So I keep looking for how this is going to help our community and maybe we'll find a way. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I have an audience participation question. I want to ask you, students out there, what class you're in that you come in and you listen to our city council meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have to be here. Wow, okay.
Well, we're glad to see you here and I'm introing into something else I'd like to initiate, and that is, I'd like to start familiarizing you guys more with some of the stuff that goes on with the government. So city government, I think it's really important, and I thank you guys for being here tonight, and I hope you learned something from it. I'd like to go and talk to your teachers, not for extra work or anything, and learn from some of the students. If you'd like to come to a class that we'd like to put on, maybe to see what other departments in the city, how they run. And this is my first little endeavor with this. If anybody has any thoughts, let me know, but I would like to go out and talk to some of the students and some of the teachers and see if maybe there was a little program that we could put on just maybe once to tell you how the other departments work in the city. So that's something I'd like to look into. I'm going to initiate myself and start off. Make sure y'all guys get about three more extra hours of homework every night. Just kidding. And want to talk about the chamber luncheon. I'm going to tag team with Jason on Thursday to talk about some of the things that's going on in the city. So we hope you'll all attend. And I also want to start talking about, because before you blink your eyes, it's going to be the Fourth of July, and actually, this year, we do get to have our Independence Day celebration on the Fourth of July. And we've added a couple of things this year. We're going to have a run in, this is one of our very early thoughts on this, but we are going to have a run in the morning to benefit in some of the programs that we've established for Officer Ton. And also, we've added a parade, so we'd like anybody that wants to participate in having a parade. Along with all of that, we are having all kinds of things, softball tournaments, horseshoe tournaments, volleyball tournaments, a band in the evening. It's going to be awesome. We have a great rock and roll band from five to nine, and then we're going to have fireworks.
Five thirty to nine thirty.
Five thirty to nine thirty. We hope you'll all come out. It's going to be a lot of fun and it's free and it's a get-together for the city of Gulf, and we'd like to see everybody come on out. And also, if you'd like to decorate a float, let us know because we're going to have a parade this year. So that's all I've got to say. Anybody else?
And you guys are welcome to come up and ask us questions anytime. Maybe we'll have to talk to your teachers and make one of y'all ask us a question on the podium, huh? That's part of our homework assignment.
Thanks for coming. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. I saw three, I saw three girls when I came in. That's the good evening girls, and they were like, "Hi." You know what three you are over there. Like, let's get out of here.